At this time, I'll call the May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five Board of Supervisors meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to ask of everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by IT Support Technician Jacob Melvin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have our invocation, which will be provided by Stephanie Nichols.
Let us bow together in prayer. God of all, we come before you grateful for this community, its beauty, its wonders, and most of all, its people. We are thankful too, for those who strive to lead, guide them, and grant them wisdom, strength, and your peace as they go about providing for this community. Their work is not easy, the decisions are often complex, and rarely is the stuff of budgets and water and sewer glamorous, but it is vital to life and to the quality of life. And Lord, as we approach Memorial Day, as we drive by the courthouse and see the crosses and flags, we pray for the families of those who have sacrificed their lives for our country. We pray too, for all who have and are serving, particularly remembering those who carry scars that will be with them always. May their presence among us inspire us all to serve community, country, and you with boldness and dedication. And we pray in the name of the One who showed us how to truly serve, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thanks, thanks to everyone for being here tonight. At this time, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We do need to just to go ahead and remove item, the closed session, item A five, that will be rescheduled for the June twenty-sixth board meeting.
Okay, so no closed session tonight?
No need for closed session.
All right. Any other adjustments to our agenda for tonight, amendments? Hearing none?
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have. Okay, minutes from our previous meeting. I hope everyone's had an opportunity to look through those.
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the previous meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes carry. Presentations, American Legion Post eighteen to ten, Mark Chaney, Commander, if you'd like to come up here.
Okay, yep, I think Mr. Weiner has a copy of the resolution he'd like to read into record.
Okay.
It's a resolution of the Smith County Board of Supervisors to recognize Poppy Day. Whereas, America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizens and soldiers, and whereas millions of Americans have answered the call to arms and served our nation with honor and distinction, particularly those who made the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our country's values. And whereas, the red poppy has been recognized as a symbol of sacrifice made by those who served and died for our nation in all wars and conflicts. And whereas, the American Legion Auxiliary has long distributed red poppies as a tribute to those who gave their lives in service to our country, beginning with the aftermath of World War I. And whereas, Poppy Day is a time to honor the fallen and support the living heroes who have worn the uniform of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas, wearing a red poppy serves as a visible reminder of the cost of our freedom and honors the courage and sacrifice of our veterans and their families. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Smith County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize the Friday before Memorial Day each year as Poppy Day in Smith County, Virginia. And be it further resolved, the Board encourages all citizens, residents, and organizations to wear a red poppy on this day as a sign of remembrance and support for those who have served in the United States Armed Forces. Adopted this twenty-second day of May, two thousand and twenty-five, Sean M. E., Clerk, Mike Sturgill, Vice Chair of the Smith County Board of Supervisors.
You want to come down and make the presentation? I don't know if you wanted to say anything while he's coming down.
I would like to. After World War I, the poppy flourished in Europe, and scientists attributed the growth to the soils in France and Belgium becoming enriched with lime and from the rubble left by the war. From the dirt and the mud grew a poppy, a beautiful red poppy. The red poppy came to symbolize the blood shed during the battle following the publication of the wartime poem in Flanders Field. On September twenty-seventh, nineteen twenty, the poppy became the official flower of the American Legion family to memorize the soldiers who fought and died during the war, World War I. In nineteen twenty-four, the distribution of poppies became a national program of the American Legion. Led by the American Legion Auxiliary, each year, the members of the American Legion family distribute poppies with the request that the person receiving the flower simply make a donation to support the future veterans and the active-duty military personnel and their families with medical and financial assistance. This year, with the thank you, members of the Board of Supervisors, with your help and with your recognition, the American Legion Auxiliary from Marion, we will be outside of Walmart in Marion, CBS in Marion, and Food City in Chilhaui from ten to four, with tables set up to give away red poppies to anyone, just all we simply ask is a donation. We do not sell the poppies, we simply give them away, and this, any and all money collected goes directly to assist disabled and hospitalized veterans in our community. Meaning, and that's, that's what it's about. It's about the VFW and the American Legion working hand-in-hand in a lot of these programs, and the money that we'll raise will go directly back to help our Smith County veterans. So thank you again, each one of you, and Sean, thank you for all your help in making this possible.
My camera froze up.
On behalf of the Smith County Board of Supervisors, I'd like to thank all the members of the VFW Post eighteen for your dedication and service to our community, our country, because I think we live in the greatest place on earth, and it's thanks to you all that we live here. Thank you so much, sir. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Move to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by to provide the Board with update on operations and rate adjustments.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the Board, thank you all for having me. Wanted to give you all a couple of updates on a couple of things that we're working on. First and foremost, there's probably a little talk of rates during the legislative session. Wanted to give you an update on how legislation fared and what passed and how it will help your constituents. Also, wanted to talk a little bit about our customer assistance programs. We were actually at older American State in Chilhaui today, set up, passing out information on that, so hopefully that's helping. And also, wanted to briefly talk about some of the tree work we're doing. I know that's always a big issue in our beautiful rural communities, we've got a lot of trees, and those can hurt the power lines, so I wanted to go into that as well. First and foremost, the Appalachian, it was called the Apco Rate Reduction Act, it passed the General Assembly, it goes into effect July one. The Governor did sign it, so it is good to go. It was House Bill twenty-six twenty-one and Senate Bill ten seventy-six, Delegate Ballard out of the New River Valley, excuse me, getting tongue-tied, carried the bill, as did Senator Mark Peake out of Lynchburg. So there's, there's kind of two pieces of, there's multiple pieces of it, but two pieces that deal with rates and help lower rates, and I want to go through those with you. First one that you'll see is in November, you'll see about a five percent decrease on power bills. That comes from, it's in the bill, but it also comes from previous work. In two thousand and twenty-two, around Christmas, we had that terrible storm that was so, so, so cold. I know, I live in Bristol, my house, it was about zero degrees for about three days straight, so power bills were incredibly high, but part of that too was the fuel costs. We had to buy power, had to buy fuel for our plants, and the fuel went up about four hundred times what it normally does. And fuel is a pass-through to the customer, we don't make any profit on that, that's whatever we pay, the customer pays. Four hundred times is a lot to pass through to the customer. So we asked for state approval to allow us to spread that out over three years versus the one year that we normally do, that's required by state law. So that fuel cost will roll off in November. December bills, you should see about four to five percent decrease. So that, that was in the works already, but the bill helped solidify that, make sure it doesn't get messed up, and make sure that stays on course. Secondly, a big thing that the bill does, it allows Appalachian Power to securitize our coal assets. We have two plants in West Virginia that run on coal, and we secure, get to securitize those, as well as the cost related to Helene recovery, and then the first winter storm this year. We've had several storms this year, so they were piling up, so we were able to get some of that on there too. So it all, our, our folks are working on the securitization process right now. It did take state approval, so we can't really do anything officially until July one, when the bill takes effect. And it also depends on the State Corporation Commission's caseload as to when the timeline will actually play out. We're looking, hoping, early two thousand and twenty-six, you'll see the impact of securitization, and that should be up to ten percent or so on bills. So kind of, kind of what we're seeing is around ten, but as things work out, and depending on timeline things, but so five percent, four to five percent in November, December, and then ten percent sometime hopefully early next, next year. So close to fifteen percent decrease, thanks to this legislation, thanks to the kind of the securitization, and then also the fuel rolling off. So that should be a tremendous help to folks. Additionally, there's several other provisions in the bill. Currently, the state law requires that when we go for every two years for a rate determination, those new rates, whatever they are, whether they go up or down, typically they go up as the costs go up, but those go into effect in January, the worst time of the year for those to go into effect. Winter is when most of our folks are using the most energy, so this bill requires or does not allow rate increases to go into effect in the winter months, so that would be November through February. So that, that will help protect folks as well, so you won't feel that, that pinch quite as much. And then also, we're instructed by the state to file for a winter rate. We've asked for that in the past, State Corporation Commission doesn't like having different rates, however legislation dictates that we do this, so we're hoping that we can get this through this year. But it, it allows a lower rate in the winter when people use more energy, but then maybe in the spring and fall, the shoulder months when people use less energy, rates would be adjusted there to kind of balance. So that should be a huge help. Haven't filed that as a company yet, don't know what that's going to look like, but we're told to do it, so it's, it's coming. And then also, a couple of things, we're not, we're not allowed to charge reconnection fees until, I have the wrong date here, but it's March thirty-first of next year, and then we're also cannot charge late fees through the end of this year, and both of those start July one, so that, that should help folks that are kind of, as rates reset, as folks reset, should give folks a little breathing room. I just want to say, I want to thank our legislators that worked on this, Delegate Ballard, I mentioned, Senator Peake, but also Delegate O'Quinn, he used to represent part of the county, he played a huge role in getting this across the finish line and making sure that these really good provisions to help your constituents, our customers, your neighbors, help keep those in there. So it took a lot of work to get this across the finish line, so I just want to thank our legislators that worked on this. And then, I did want to briefly mention our customer assistance programs. I've got some flyers here that I'll leave with you, a stack of those that detail some of these. Got these right here, and then our energy efficiency programs. If everyone here has Appalachian Power, I'd assume, and if you're not on the average monthly payment plan, I would recommend it, everybody here as well. It helps you better budget, it does a rolling average of the last twelve months, it's been really helpful to those folks that are on the edge, especially in the winter months. So I would encourage you all to look at that, encourage other folks to.
Jacob, could I interrupt a second?
Yeah.
If, so to say, there's someone here that doesn't understand the average, could you tell them how to sign up for that?
Sure, I have a flyer here that has our eight-hundred number on it. Call in and just tell them you want to be on the average monthly payment plan, and it, there is a budget plan right now that the legislation is doing away with. It has, in the past, it's, it was the only option, folks could agree to pay so much per month, but then at the end of the year, they had to true-up, and that, that true-up month is what I hear the most complaints about. So we're trying to get people on the average monthly payment plan versus the balanced billing, because it's just, that true-up month has, has hurt some folks. So, and then also, the low-income home energy assistance program, it's a federally funded program administered by DSS, but it, it gives folks in the winter and summer months, when bills are higher, gives them access to funding through the Social Services Office, so I would encourage folks to look into that. It's on the flyer here, the window opens June fifteenth, trying to get folks connected to that. And then for folks that are really struggling, that are behind on their bills, we have the, it's a new program, I always mess up the, the name, it's, it's called PIP, but it's the Percentage of Income Payment Program, where they commit to paying a percentage of their income to pay their bills, and it, it wipes away some of the debt there, so it's very helpful for those that are just very, very far behind. And that is also done through social services as well. So I'd encourage folks that are really struggling to look into that. And then also, we have our energy efficiency programs, I have the green flyers here for anybody that would like one. We can do a home energy audit, have somebody come into your home free of charge and see where energy is leaking, see what's using a ton of energy, just help you diagnose where you might be losing energy, AKA money. And then also, there's a Bring Your Own Thermostat program, you get a gift card for that, there's benefits for energy efficiency appliances, there's just a lot of good options to help you make your home a little, little more energy efficient, so you're using less energy, because after all, the cheapest energy is the energy you don't use. And as a representative of our company, I probably shouldn't say that, so. But, and then finally, I did want to talk about the trees and the vegetation clearing. So any, any vegetation management plan we have has to be approved by the State Corporation Commission, so it's always tug and pull, how much we can do, when we can do it. We've been doing, been able to get a little more in the system, so the better we can maintain the vegetation, the better reliability is, better services. However, what we found, as we've crunched the numbers, is the vast majority, about ninety percent of the outages caused by trees, come from trees outside the right-of-way, so trees we can't control. Our folks do go through the lines, try to find those danger trees, so to speak, and speak to property owners. A lot of times, property owners are willing, especially when they know what could happen, but if you're maybe downtown Marion, somewhere like that, where it's a beautiful old tree, not always, not always the case. So in those, in those instances, I will tell you all this, ask you this, I guess, when we have residents or customers that might not be open to a conversation, we might reach out to you to see if we could have a group conversation, just talk about the community need there. So I've talked to our forestry team, and they're, they're going to alert me when there's any trees like that that we need help on, so we'll be reaching out on those. And then, so, so with that, I just want to let you know that relief is coming, rates are, hopefully, they are coming down with the, the multiple steps. Some of the customer assistance programs can help in the meantime or throughout that. So we, I grew up in Damascus, I'm from southwest Virginia, these are my friends and family, my neighbors that are paying our bills, so we want to make sure that everybody can, can live well, do well, and we want to, want to help our neighbors. So if there's anything we can do to help you all do that, let us know.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have questions for Mr. Holmes?
Can we get a copy of that?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave these stacks with you.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
There you go. Jake, thank you for being here, it's good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
So the, the tree work, I'll have to say, I've noticed over the last year and a half or so, it seemed like it's helped a lot.
Good.
In some areas that I've been in and seen, a lot of the brush me the trees, so I think that's a positive thing. And like you said, obviously, you're not going to avoid everything, but my question is, and I don't know if you can answer this or not.
I'll give it a good shot.
So how, how does the rates compare for southwest Virginia with other electrical companies in the region?
It, it's hard to compare across state lines, but, so I hate, our, our best comparison is dominion, but there's a couple of caveats there, they have about five times the customers we do. Our, we have about seventeen customers per mi- mile of line paying the cost of that line, they have about forty-six customers per mile of line, so it, it's drastic. I, I will, will say that they, they went in for a rate increase this year, we, we alternate years, and they're, with the reductions coming from this legislation, with the fuel rolling off, and with their rate increase, we'll be roughly even, kind of ebbs and flows and depends, so it, costs are greater, unfortunately.
So does that mostly affect southwest Virginia more because it's more isolated versus other areas in the AEP?
It's, the rate is across the board, so it, everybody's paying the same rate, so...
So Ohio's paying the same rate?
Well, everybody in the state of Virginia that's AEP.
Oh, okay.
Different states, um, different states have different regulations, I guess. In west Virginia, we go before the public service, the PUC, I forget the, what the acronym is, but yeah, and then Tennessee, we have the, the T-Pub, the Tennessee Public Utility Commission, so each state has its own regulatory body, we go before the State Corporation Commission, and they set our rates just for Virginia. So, thank you.
Excellent. And, and, and thank you for being here.
Yes, sir.
And so I guess my question is, I'm always thinking about where we could be down the, this area into Virginia, you know, Smith County, Washington County, any, really, any, any way this into Virginia, but right now, if you're looking at your power grid, is there, how much excess energy do we have? So if we had somebody come in, say we, you know, always trying to think about economic development, that kind of stuff, so if a large factory moved in, right now, would the power grid handle that, or at that point, would you go, well, we really can't do that on this end of the state?
We, there's definitely wiggle room there for growth, and our, I see, you know Whitney Slusniak, our Economic Development Specialist, she is the person that can kind of cross those lines there for us, but we definitely have room for growth, large, large-scale anything, we'd have to obviously plan for a little bit and just coordinate a little, but we, we do have opportunities for growth. And I will say, economic development is, is the biggest way we get rates down, even more so. If you have that larger customer load per line mile, everybody does a little better, so just rising tide, so if there's anything we can do to help you all on that front, we, we want to do that.
And I guess, I'd follow that up with, I understand the logistics of it, but we have areas, you know, we have pockets of the community, that especially that I represent, but also areas that Rick represents on the other side of the county that, with that being said though, you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of lines, miles of lines that go through a, you know, a more unpopulated area, which, you know, has higher trees and that kind of stuff. It, it seems like a lot of times, we do have these storms, not today, not tomorrow, but down the road, has there ever a thought that that would be an area where, you know, for future, I guess, for future stability in those lines, you would ever even think about burying those lines?
The cost is incredibly large.
I understand the cost is more to bury it, but it's also less to maintain it at that point.
Well, I, I will say, as, especially during Helene, when we had to kind of reconstruct a lot of areas, the old days of AEP, you wanted lines out in the woods so you couldn't see them. Now, we want lines next to the road so you can get to them and fix them, and, and there's some, there's less trees there too. So we've shifted a lot. So there's a couple of projects here in Smith County we're looking at, we're moving a, an established line to, to a roadway, just to get it out of the trees, better access. So undergrounding is something we do like, look at it in some areas, but it just, the cost is so vastly different from overhead, that it, it's hard to justify putting that on the customers right now.
I'm wondering if it, would it be worth, you know, some of the areas where the trees could hit the line, but beyond your right-of-way, is it worth buying more right-of-way in, in order to capture those trees, or I don't, I'm sure it's probably miles and miles and miles and miles of right-of-way.
The, the cost would, would grow with that, and then also, I think there are some legal parameters on how much right-of-way too, so I...
Because a lot of those areas are National Forest anyway.
True.
So is that a good agreement you have to have with National Forest, or...
Yes, and that, they're great to work with, but it's also very long drawn out and difficult, I wouldn't say difficult, but just involved process.
Yeah, federal government does things fast, don't they?
Yeah.
They call it a gauging agreement, don't they? To gauge the trees, they fly by and, with the helicopter, and it looks, follows the line, and any tree that has the possibility of falling and reaching the line, they call it gauging.
Mm-hmm.
And the, and the papers signed to get the right-of-way through there, has that gauging in there that they can gauge, if necessary.
That's what they're...
And it'll go through, you see, fly by and have the plates hanging down under them and trimming them off.
It's an impressive site, yeah, yeah.
But burying them underground would be, I'd hate to even go to the railroad and tell them, I want to bury a pine tree. I have had it before, and it's been several years ago, just for a little bit of information for you. Had a house for rent, had some big old huge white oak trees in the yard. One of them went down, took down two poles and all the lines. They come and fix them, they was working on them, all the lines was laying on the ground, the trees was laying on the ground, they folded. There was two more trees hanging over the wall, and I said, go ahead, lay them trees down, cut them, get them out of there while you got your line down. They said, we can't, they're not on our right-of-way. I said, well, they're going to follow on your line, you know that, and they said, yeah, when they do, we'll come back and fix them again.
If, if we don't have that...
I'm glad I don't have stock in the heat field.
We, we have to have that permission if it's not...
Yeah.
So...
And I, they, I'd save them to do it, and they wouldn't.
Yeah. Wouldn't go. Well, if you hear of any issues from your constituents, from you all that like that, where a good conversation can be had, happy to try to dig into things and try to help, want to make sure we're a good...
Something else, I think, I can't remember if I spoke with you, I know I've spoken with a couple of people about this, but I think, am I mistaken, where AEP is trying to make their, like a smart grid, so your line will technically self-diagnose itself...
Right.
And tell you, but, but it does require cellular service or some kind of...
We, we have fiber between our, our facility, or our, it's, there's fiber on the line too, so, yeah, that's, that's how we get that.
All right.
But I, I know cell service is a...
Yeah, I mean, anything you can do there, we've got areas of this county where, you know, we do what we can, and you can't get it, you can't make them come, but continue to have conversations, but, you know, any, any power pressure you've got there, we'll be more than happy to, you know, to have, have your support.
Well, anything we can do, if you, if there's any hangup on our side, any of that, let us know.
All right, that's good, thank you.
Any more questions, Mr. Holmes? Jacob Bonett, personally, thank you for being here tonight, answering questions and giving us a good presentation. I think it'll help a lot of people knowing that information on rate reductions and things.
I'll leave some cards as well, so...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Ut, would you, do we want the school system to go before the county, or does the county...
That's actually what I was going to ask, since we have several members from the school board here, I'm, I'm happy to yield to, to Dr. Carter.
I'd rather wait around just to keep my songs in hand.
We will stay as long as you wish.
But not after July thirty-first, sir.
I will come back.
Thank you, Dan.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Have a safe home.
Well, good evening, thank you for allowing us to come and present the FY twenty-six Smith County School Board budget to you tonight. I do want to start off by thanking our, we do have some board members with us tonight, we have Mrs. Susan Williams, our Board Chair, Mr. McCannon, Ms. Sue Tillson, so thank you for being here, we appreciate you being in attendance. Also, our budget team consisting of Julie Baer, our Finance Director, Jason Kilburn, our HR Director, and Dr. Kimberly Williams, who is our Assistant Superintendent, so I want to thank all of them for being here. And thanks to the Board of Supervisors Budget Committee, as well as Mr. Ut in working
And thanks to the Board of Supervisors, uh Budget Committee, as well as Mr. Ut in working to land on solid figures for the FY twenty-six budget. Uh it is a, it, budget development was complex this year, the governor actually signed the budget late, it was May the second when the budget was actually signed. I'll go through the budget book and highlight some of the pages, but then I'll circle back to talk about the highlights within the budget, so we'll go that route. If you'll turn to page eight, want to highlight that, all schools are fully accredited. And then in turn, I want to highlight the Smith Promise Program and accolades to the Smith County Board of Supervisors for what you do, and as well as the Smith County Community Foundation for offering free college tuition to our students who graduate and go on to to your university. So that that is tremendous, so while they're in school, fully accredited, and they have opportunity when they graduate. So in that meantime, how do we get there? How do we build a budget to accommodate these kids and give them opportunities that that they deserve? And this this budget does that, and I'll highlight some of those things. If you look at page, if you look at page twelve, our board establishes priorities on a yearly basis. And I want to highlight just the very first priority, as long as I've been superintendent almost a decade, this has been our number one priority with Smith County Schools. And that is, it it all ties to recruitment and retention of staff members. It's continued to find solutions to improve employee compensation, fringe benefits, including employee insurance costs for all job categories in order to provide competitive salaries and benefits that attract and retain outstanding school division employees. And I would argue that Smith County Schools has the best employees in the Commonwealth and throughout the nation. We have fantastic staff members, and I'm thankful to work alongside them. So the financial aspect, we'll we'll talk about revenue, money coming in, and expenditures, money going out. So if you'll turn to page eighteen, our funding sources come from multiple areas. The first is state, and when you look at state money, you look at state uh revenue, also included in that is sales tax. And if you look at state revenue at the beginning, the top of the chart from twenty-five to twenty-six, you're seeing an increase of state revenue of eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and also state sales tax, an increase of three hundred and seven thousand dollars. Federal revenue, a reduction of one point one million, that all ties back to ESAR funds that we built into the budget for twenty-five, anticipating those. They're not in twenty-six, that that's just not something that would continue past FY twenty-five. So those federal funds are removed, and that takes us down to the anticipated federal amount that we have seen historically, that those two big pots of money tie to Title I funds and also to special education funds. Those are, those are two big pots of money in our in our federal revenue. Additionally, another revenue um increases six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, bringing our overall increase in revenue to seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars. Also, keep in mind that one point one million is is kind of misleading when you look at that, so when you take that out, that is a much more substantial uh increase in in overall budget from twenty-five to twenty-six. On the expenditure side, on page twenty-five, you all fund us categorically, as you know, and and we do quarterly appropriations, which works quite nicely with the Board of Supervisors along with the school board and with um Mr. Ut and Ms. Richardson working together with us. We we navigate that quite well with the quarterly appropriations. But again, categorically, those, you appropriate funds to us in a category, and we don't have the ability to overspend that category. That's why you'll see in the month of June, a an amendment come to you to help us finish out twenty-six, to adjust some money within those categories. But in instruction, when you look, and and all of this is tied up, and I'll go over how this, how these funds are being spent in just a minute. But in instruction, you're seeing an increase of two point three million dollars. Administration, eighty-one thousand dollars, transportation, a reduction of thirty-eight thousand. And in FY twenty-five, we had an additional bus, and in FY twenty-six, we reverted back to our bus replacement cycle of three buses per per fiscal year. Operations and maintenance, an increase of two hundred thousand, food service, an increase of two hundred and thirty-four thousand. Facilities, there's that two point one million kind of back off the books from from the increase. And then in technology is sixty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So when you look at the funds and you see the additional money going out, almost all of this is tied to benefits and salaries. If you, the raises that we have that the board approved last night in the budget, and again, obviously contingent upon Board of Supervisors approval, the teacher salary scale is an increase of twenty-seven hundred dollars for next year, which works out to be an upper four percent to an upper five percent raise for teachers. Coming out of General Assembly, the budget requires a three percent raise, so we're well above the raise that's required from the General Assembly going into FY twenty-six. Ten-month clerical, twelve-month clerical, twelve-month central office clerical, payroll, nurse, tech specialist, instructional aides, maintenance, mechanics, and food service all receive a five percent raise going into next academic year. Uh custodians, we have a one dollar per hour raise, and bus drivers a one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar per raise going into next fiscal year. And the bus driver proportionally, percentage-wise, is a little higher, uh but that is our most difficult position to fill, and we are taking applications for bus drivers tonight, so if you are interested, please see our HR Director, Jason Kilburn, sitting at the back. Um but this, these raises are well above what is expected from the state, and I I do think it is reflective, certainly not, our our employees deserve more, but it's been a healthy budget year this year with a five thousand dollar raise for staff and then going into next year. Those are healthy raises from during FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six. Additionally, uh as as great to hear Jake uh Jacob Paul speak about the apaloxia power and and the cost. We're experiencing that as a school system, as you can imagine, and while we budgeted an increase of approximately two hundred thousand dollars this current calendar year, or this fiscal year. When we look ahead, we're we're tracking pretty strong, but the unknown is still the unknown, and you you've got to prepare for the what-ifs. We did build into the budget an additional eighty thousand dollars for power in FY twenty-six, twenty thousand dollars for additional propane cost if what's needed, and also fifty thousand dollars for fuel for our buses, and we operate fifty-four buses, most run two routes per day, and fuel, as you know, can fluctuate in cost, so being able to handle that. The the beauty of all of this is money, if if we put that money in and we don't utilize it at the end of the year, the board has been gracious enough through policy now, thank you, Mr. Ut and Board of Supervisors, that by policy, the remaining funds roll back into the school system for capital improvement projects, which in turn helps alleviate the board, the board from having to go into debt service to handle projects. So it's a, it's a good solution for us moving forward. Additionally, we did see a seven point one percent insurance increase that we did try to navigate to the best of our ability. We um have an additional contribution of fifty-five dollars for employee only, seventy-five dollars for employee plus one, and a hundred and five dollars for the family plan, and just to get that equated to, we offer three health insurance plans, the five hundred dollar deductible, thousand dollar, and high deductible. And when you look at that middle-of-the-pack um insurance plan, the one thousand dollar deductible plan, that additional contribution by the school board increases the employee only by eight dollars per month. It increases the employee plus one by forty-one dollars and the family plan by sixty-five. So you calculate that out in line with the twenty-seven hundred dollar raise or the five percent raise, it does help negate that insurance cost, and employees still have additional take-home pay coming in, which is always obviously the goal. Also, in this budget, we have additional funds for Virtual Academy, and we do have some students that are, that do attend Virtual Academy, and this helps offset some of that cost. Funding for alternative education, including interchange, that's a partnership that we have with Highlands Community Services that helps serve uh some of our youngsters, and we do see that program working beautifully for the for the students who need that, and we do anticipate some expansion with the interchange program, so putting some additional funds there, as well as the addition of a behavioral specialist for the FY twenty-six academic year, and we're in the process of interviewing for that position now. Aside from that, that pretty well accommodates the expenditure side of our budget. Again, primarily, um most, if not all of those funds are tied to salary increases and help with insurance costs for our employees. If you'll turn to page thirty, this is our capital outlay or debt service, what money you all spend through us to pay for debt that the county incurred for our facility. Some of the things on the books still, Oak Point Elementary School, uh Marion Elementary School renovation, Saltville Elementary School renovation from years ago. So the the increase in FY twenty-six is a hundred and eighty-four dollars, so it's not a lot going into FY twenty-six. Going into FY twenty-seven, you're seeing a much bigger drop, you'll see some things come off. So I think we have about a three hundred thousand drop going into FY twenty-seven off of debt service, so that 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 helps as you move forward. Um and helps with that capacity of of the division. On page thirty-four is the total budget, just to highlight total budget, this would include total operational budget as well as capital outlay, and the total budget for FY twenty-six is seventy million, eight hundred, forty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars, an increase of seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. I would like to highlight on page thirty-five as well, and I I can't, cannot stress enough the importance, one, the gratitude, second, that I have as Superintendent of the ability to have conversations with members of the, of my board and your board and Mr. Ut, Ms. Richardson, about budgetary concerns, about budgetary conversations, how we want to move forward as a school division, how we can help the county move forward within the school system and help with economic development, with recruitment in that regard. But we also understand finances of of the locality, and I know that um Mr. Atkins, as well as the rest of the board has stated, the goal is to get to a hundred and fifteen percent of required local effort, that fifteen percent above that mark that the state tells you that you have to, that you have to give to public education. In speaking with Mr. Ut, with the with the expenses that I know that you all are incurring, we're looking at level funding going into the next academic year. So for FY twenty-six, if you see at the bottom, the state requires eleven million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and the group, the uh the amount that that we budgeted on is eleven million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight forty-nine, which is exactly what it was for FY twenty-five. That does put you at a hundred and two percent of required local effort, which is approximately about two hundred and fifty thousand above what the state requires you to get. But keep in mind, even at that point, we're able to still do a lot of good for our employees, so so I just, I wanted to share that. And thank you for what you are willing to do to the school system, and thank you for your drive to get to that one fifteen percent mark. We we understand the complexities of budget, so we're thankful for what you can do and thankful for this.
Just a a quick note, do you have that calculation if we were at a hundred and fifteen percent, one point six million?
It's approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand for percentage. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And if I was not standing up here in front of the microphone, I would try to calculate that, Mike Sturgill can do that for us, though, but anyway. I I would like to, I would like to highlight on page thirty-six, starting with thirty-six and go through just a couple of pages of the of the budget book. Uh as you can see right there, great picture, Hunter Trivin, he is a PE teacher at Oak Point Elementary School. He is phenomenal, by the way, but but you can see there that the kids obviously would love someone like that, that would uh that would be there. Smith County School highlights, seven hundred full-time employees, thirty-seven part-time. We have approximately twenty-eight percent of our full-time employees that hold a master's degree, so that's a good percentage for us. Hundred ninety-seven teachers and administrators. Of our population, we have five hundred and twenty-six people participating in the local insurance program. On the next page, under transportation, we have, age of our fleet, we go back to two thousand and five with some of our older buses, but we have some as new as twenty twenty-five. We have fifty-four routes, uh fifty-four route buses, most of those have two per day, we call those affectionately a city run and a country run. So we have those that run close to the school and then those that go out to the outskirts of the county. And when you cover four hundred and fifty-two square miles, a big old county, that's a, that's a lot of travel. We average two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine miles driven each day, haul approximately two thousand students, and we drive, we anticipate driving at the conclusion as of tomorrow, will have driven six hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred miles this year. Food service, equally is proud of our food service employees, we operate twelve cafeterias. During FY twenty-five, we are projected to serve six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-three meals. And I would like to highlight that during Helene, your teachers, your cafeteria staff, lots of volunteers, lots of folks, maybe even some of you, but some of our board members, there's lots of folks came in to help our community through Helene. And there were boots-on-the-ground serving, we served as hubs for water, um collection places, people could come in and eat, and we served twelve thousand, three hundred and forty meals through Helene. But that is a testament to our cafeteria staff for helping us and our teachers, aides, bus drivers, just everyone. And I'm I'm so thankful, and I think it's it's a testament to the character that our um, that our staff and our community have in taking care of one another. So I'm I'm very thankful for that. In instruction, just, I do want to highlight a couple of things here. Number two is is huge for us, uh continue the healthcare excellence program, which is phenomenal. The manufacturing excellence program and Teachers for Tomorrow, I know some of you all have been involved and been able to visit with some of our graduations and some of our visits to local industry, you're always welcome and we're grateful for you to be there. We do have our Hills program with the Emory and Henry University, it continues to just grow astronomically. This year, in our tenth grade group, and keep in mind, it's with Smith City of Bristol in Washington County. We have slots for about sixty kids and we had a hundred and twelve applications, so it is lots and lots of interest in our Hills program. And also Go Tech Labs, we are so excited and thrilled to have Go Tech Labs in our middle schools, and at the beginning of next academic year, we will have them in all three of our middle schools, so we're very excited. If you get the opportunity to swing by and see those, they are, they are phenomenal, phenomenal. Highlight one more thing, and I will stop and I will answer any question you have. If you look on page thirty-nine, the picture, uh the picture highlights Saltville Elementary School as being a blue ribbon school. That is our first in our county, that is a national, obviously, award, and we are thrilled that Saltville Elementary School was the recipient of the, and being designated as a blue ribbon school. And that ties to, when you look at Saltville Elementary, they have some of the um most depressed economic areas, lowest socioeconomic status with our students. Um I was, I was looking at S O L scores today, and fifth grade is batting a hundred percent pass rate, so they are doing extremely well. Statistics and research will show you that there is a correlation between socioeconomic status and the ability to pass a test. And in Smith County, that is not true. Here, we we accomplish it, and that's a testament to our staff, that's a testament to our students, and to our parents. And we're thankful for that collaboration in helping our kids achieve success, and then you all helping them see that opportunity with the Smith Promise as they transition into life. So thank you for what you do for Smith County Schools, thank you for what you do for the division, thank you for what you have done for me, and I will be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, anyone have any budget, any questions for Dr. Carter?
Very much, he does a great job, I hate to look at him.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Call, I appreciate you, sir.
Pleasure working.
Pleasure working with you too, sir, thank you.
True words were spoken.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, I appreciate all of that.
So you get emotional now.
I'm not. I could very easily, so I'm going to be real careful right here.
Yes, sir.
And after having kids that, you know, went through school wide, that, you know, you've always been class act.
Thank you.
For people that have worked for you and stuff, al- always, class act, appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure to serve Smith County, it's been a pleasure.
And I'll have something to say to some of the staff that I've had to play with and work with, making it happen for everybody, you better be in that position.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
It's awesome. Bottom all the way up, all I've ever heard is good things, and if it has been a pleasure for me.
I appreciate you saying that, thank you, Mr. White, thank you all. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
On behalf of the Smith County Board of Supervisors, we'd like to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And as a great friend, it's been a great journey.
It's your hands, absolutely it has, now we'll walk away, thank you.
Okay, at this time, Mr. Ut will present the county draft budget in preparation for the June fifth public hearing. Thank you all for tuning in. One more and you had a quorum.
I'm going to, I've got a PowerPoint that was going to be nice and fancy and. I'll get started while she finds that. So um twenty-five or twenty-six has proven to be quite the uh challenge with, helps if I turn it on, with the uh with the budget, as Dr. Carter said, you know, we really appreciative with the schools and being able to have good partners, but some of the highlights that we've had to deal with, we had more challenges than highlights this year. Honestly, this is the, this is by far the toughest one I've had to to work on. Um first item, the the real estate equalization area, we've talked about that quite a bit, uh where we um, the the equalization rate was was miscalculated. I'm off about four cents of this current year, we had about a loss of about a million dollars on the real estate tax. So um there's going to be at least a public hearing to consider correction of that. State budget did have a three percent increase across the board, so it's been the board's policy in the past several years to follow suit. So this budget does increase a, include a three percent um uh salary increase. Uh health insurance increased twelve percent again this year, uh last year was eleven percent, but it was capped. This year was twelve percent, but it was capped, and I worry that we would have been much higher um had the local choice not capped it at twelve percent. And then again, the oper- operational costs for EMS have been a a moving target. Uh and I've I've al- I've often heard from several different folks around the state that that start-up EMS operations, the first couple of years are nothing but chaos, year three is when you really get that, that better grasp of of what the costs are. Year three is when you really get that, that better grasp of what the costs are. And that, that grasp is about $900,000. A little higher expenses, a little lower on the revenue projections to be more realistic. Is it locked up? Go figure. There we go. The next item that we, we had to include is debt service tied back to the magistrate office, the sheriff's office, transfer station, and then whatever we happen to do with this building. We've outpaced, I will say that the requests outpaced our revenues by about $4 million to start the budget year. So we had to do quite a bit of cutbacks just to get down to a balanced effort. But what I'm proud of is the ability to continue to invest in public safety. You see there, what my first budget, 2020, 2021, we invested just under 4.8 billion in public safety. This proposed budget more than doubles that to nearly $10 million. And that is, in my opinion, is a recognition to the, to the citizens that the board supervisor sees public safety as a top priority along with, with education and, and the challenges that, that we have to meet. The next item, just the overall budget, we're looking at a lower budget next year than we currently have. However, this current year FY '25 budget does include about $23 billion in capital expenses. We're not gonna spend all that money this fiscal year, so there's gonna be some rollovers, about 7.8 million in next year. But we're still, even after accounting for that, where we do have a lower operational budget that we're working toward, just to try and be as conservative as possible. Looking at...
Is it 7.825?
You can't type over here.
7.825, is that for the carryover? Is that already pre-planned for use or is that...
Yeah, so the, the majority of that 7.8, maybe 6 million is in the bond that we did for building construction. Maybe a million is left over from what I expect to have for the public safety radio project. And then there's some transfer station bond funds that will, may or may not have as rollover. Those are the three, the three projects that we have, including that 7.8.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
And I think it's the slide before that one. The, I was just looking at difference in the sheriff dispatch. Is that due, is that like where some of the grants are not paid for the SROs?
No, so, so some of that is increased state funding that we have to match. Some of that is where we've lost this current year, or this coming year, we've lost funding for four of the six SROs grants. And then a, five sheriff deputies for the crisis center security. There's five new deputies with an agreement that the sheriff has met, signed off on with the community services board. So there's some new deputies coming into the mix too. But a lot, a lot of that is where we're trying to, to take it, make up for the loss of grant funds. Yes, sir. Looking at our general, where our revenues come from, you can see the line share. Well, two, two big areas, the state revenues, and that's, that's gonna be your constitutional officers, some of your, your school funds. And then general property taxes are by far our largest revenue source and have always been that way. Our expenditures, public schools are our highest. Just want to let you know that on the far right, the orange column there, that is a little misnumbered because we have about a $200 and a half million rollover of accumulated ester funds that we had to get rid of, or not get rid of, but finally expend out this current year. It's much more, much lower if you took the capital out for schools. But you can see where public safety just continues to be an investment. The, our locally generated taxes come from a few different pots. By far, the largest, real estate. You see where, and the gold is our budgeted, not our actual. I will note that. So you'll see on the real estate, we budgeted almost 14, 14 and a half, 15 million dollars. It's not gonna be anywhere near that. As I said, I can get those real numbers. But real estate is our largest taxpayer. Personal property taxes do count for roughly $5 million. And then you can see the litany of local taxes and fees that make up the, the other taxes. I probably, this is just a reiteration of what Dr. Carter, just one slide of what Dr. Carter just spent 15 minutes on. And then what are we proposing for FY '26? So there's gonna be some revenue adjustment proposals laid out. We'll have public hearings on June 5th. Real estate calculation error, again, that was, the equalization rate was based on 50, was calculated at 53 and a half cents, based on 100% collections. Should have based, I should have based that on 93%. We should have based that on 93%, which would have been 57 and a half cents. So we do have a real estate tax public hearing. We did advertise six cents for some buffer room, but four cents is where the error was. Utility rates, you remember the Davenport financial presentation recommending some increases over the next five years to get to a cash flow basis where the general fund isn't subsidizing the utilities anymore. First year of that would be a 9% proposed increase. One note is the average customer that uses about 3,000 gallons would see an increase of $4.25. But just under 30% of our customers pay the minimum, which is $26, $27. So they're less than 1,000 gallons. So their, their bill would see a dollar or less. Here are some of the, the other fees that we're looking at, three sets. Water sewer connection fees, we haven't raised those in well over a decade. And the $850 doesn't come anywhere near the, the cost of materials, much less the, the manpower taken, that takes to install the taps. The billing permit fees, looking to increase from 16 cents to 20 cents across the board. That's just trying to keep up with where some of our neighbors are. And again, we haven't increased those in quite a while. And then EMS billing fees, Medicaid has increased their rates by eight point, 8.7%. And we're proposing the same, just so we can bill everything that Medicaid potentially can pay for. The public hearings, what's next? We do have five public hearings scheduled for June 5th. Again, at the real estate rate, the utility rates for the water sewer rates. The proposed fee schedules, which included those three utility connections, the permits and EMS billing. We have public hearings for the school boards, operational capital budget, and then the final one for the county overall budget plan. The goal would be to adopt rates, fees, taxes on the Thursday, June 12th meeting, if possible. We do have a couple Thursdays after that if we still need to go back to the drawing board based on the June 5th public hearings. But that's all I have, I believe, yes. That's all I have, unless there's any question you have to answer any. Crickets.
So the rating now was 53, I thought it was 59.
59 cents, we increased. We did raise it to help cover some of the debt service payments. But the issues, if we try and tie that to where we had planned as our base, is much higher than what our base was. So we did have a loss. If you didn't have the debt service to worry about, then we'd be fine. But that's, that's really my, my higher worry.
I don't have as much of an issue with the... You know, the water sewer permit and things like that, because yes, we're falling behind and we've forgotten to keep up with that. But I'll just, I'll just reiterate, I've got, I've got some concerns with the, with the other, the real estate. I may be on an island with that, but I just, like I said before, my math ain't math. But that's just my opinion.
There's still a lot of work left to be done before anything's...
So, so my, my question too would be, Sean, if, if you're looking at these other increases in your water sewer utilities and the permits and things like that, I know that's not ideal, but does that somewhat offset the other to a point? Because I mean, I know the main goal was to get it out of the main fund.
Yep.
And then being more self...
General fund, get away from the general fund. So the, the connection fees themselves aren't gonna be a huge budget, budget fixer. We only, I think we budgeted $25,000 a year total. So we may go up to 30,000 with this, with these rates. Yeah, it, it's gonna help, but it's not gonna be the initial... Yeah, it's, it's hard when, it's hard when you, we lean, we lean so heavily on one tax. And we do, I mean, granted, you know, the real estate tax for most localities is the, is the highest contributor to their, to their revenues. And it's the same here with, with Smith County.
Just seems like it's a lot to put on the citizens all at one time.
You know, one thing that I was trying to, I guess, describe to some folks the other day was, you know, it's almost that the first year of the new tax assessment, they were, they had the benefit of the error and were trying to, to correct that. That's one way to look at it. Another way is it's still, it's still a tax rate increase. I mean, plain and plain simple, it's just a matter of trying to fix an issue that we, we should have fixed or seen coming last year. I'll, I'll take, I'll take some responsibility for not catching that.
I just want to say one more thing and I'm gonna keep on, because I know we got an hearing on this. But I, I do think that we just need to take in consideration, we, you know, for the economy as a whole right now, we don't know what's gonna be won. Things, things could change a lot between now and next year. You know, I think, I think that's something we need to keep in mind when looking at this next month, that we need to consider. Because I would hate to pull the trigger on something too quick if we needed to. But that's, no, like I said, that's just my opinion. I think there's, I think there's just some other things we could look at and maybe something to try to, try to work around somehow. I'm just not very happy with this.
We're definitely keeping our eyes open and mindful.
And, and something I would say, you know, coming from, from a corporate world, you know, we all win this year with our budget, as far as a fiscal year budget. And the economy has turned and where it starts hurting the budget, where it starts hurting yourselves, where it starts doing that. They ask you from a, from our, the company I work for, from our board of directors down, are coming to each individual plant and basically saying, listen, you were budgeted this amount, but you're gonna have to tighten your belt. You're gonna have to do better. And I understand, we've got a budget and people's asking for stuff. But I will 100% say, we need to be able to give the citizens of Smith County, if, if, if the tax, if the increase goes through and if we do this, whatever we budget, I would love to see us come back at the end of the year and be able to say, you know what? We didn't spend it because we were better. Now I understand, we've got people out here and I, we say, we, we think we do well. But when the rubber meets the road, we have got to do better, figure out how to save costs. If it takes, you know, one person riding the truck as opposed to two. If we don't need to buy 40 packs of pencils, or if we can go paperless and not buy paper, or if we can do this, whatever we can do. If it comes down to we gotta cut the lights off during the board meeting and sit here in the dark and do it to save money, that's what we need to do to save money when we can. Because at the end of the day, if, if, can we continue to let people throw a budget out? I need $400,000 a year in my department. And by George, I'm gonna spend 400. That's a bad mindset. And I know we got good people, but if we allow them, I think, I'm fine if we need to give them a budget and we tell them that's their target for the year. But I think everybody ought to be, the goal should be 90, 95% of that budget. And try to put money back. Because I look at this, is now we are paying for, I guess the best way to say it is, we're paying for the sins of past boards and past actions to try to catch this stuff up. Whether it happens to be with, you know, we're catching, we're finally getting our school personnel, their salaries caught back up where they need to be. But a lot of times, we did stuff as a board before most of us were here. But we've got to make sure at the end of the day, if the revenue, we know the revenue may not come in. We're budgeting things off of us collecting it. But at the end of the day, I think every department, from the sheriff's department to the school systems, to everybody, they need to understand, if you don't spend it, it's not that next year we're gonna take it away from you. But if you don't spend it, okay, now we can roll that into next year, or we can do this, or we can do that, or it gives us extra, it gives us those rainy day funds. Because we've got to do, in my opinion, if my budget is tight at home and my revenue decreases, I can't spend it. I could say I wanna spend X a year, but I may not be able to buy that car, I may not be able to go on that vacation. Because my, just because I had it budgeted, doesn't mean it happens. And that's what we gotta do here at the county, is we have to make sure that our people understand, and I'm not talking about from department heads, but I'm talking about to the last person on that chain of command understands, if there's a cost savings opportunity, things need to be done right. But we don't need to say, well, it's not my money. Because it is, it's coming out of your pocket as a taxpayer of Smith County if we, if we waste that money.
And I gotta say, we've got, I think we have a great group of employees that they have that mindset.
Thing that was done wrong was done wrong years and years ago.
Yep.
When the taxes wasn't raised.
For so long.
It was supposed to be.
Yeah.
You got the same argument you're using right now.
Yeah.
We can't raise the taxes. If you don't raise the taxes, you're gonna do something. If you order a part for a water meter, and that water meter's a thousand dollars, you say, well, we ain't got the money. That water company says, I don't give a damn.
Yep.
Right.
You pay a thousand dollars, you want it or not. Now where's that thousand dollars gonna come from? People like gentlemen right here, like me, like you.
Yep.
If you don't raise taxes and get the money at one time, you're hurting. If you ever get behind, you're hurting.
But I, I do agree that...
Rule of thumb, never lower taxes, never.
I do agree that you need to be conservative with everything, but there's times when you do need to...
You can't, if they want a thousand dollars for that item, that's what you're gonna pay for that item, no matter...
Or you don't buy it.
We, we're having hard times where I live. We don't give a damn. We don't care where you're living.
That's what the water company says.
Absolutely.
And that, and that's 100% where I'm at, is the budget needs to be what it needs to be. But once we set that budget, and whatever that rate is for the taxes that we bring in, at that point, if we can do better on our side, if we bring in 100 and whatever the, I looked at it there a minute ago.
130.
104, let's just say rounded up, 140 million dollars. And that's where the tax rate winds up, and that's what we bill out and that's what comes in. Just because we bill 140, and that's the revenue we bring in, doesn't mean we need to spend that.
I think we all agree on what's, what's being said, but I think we ought to wait till the public hearing before we decide.
And Jason, one, one good point that you really made.
We've done that in public hearing, you're right now.
And I've seen this, I've seen this many years in budgets, when people come down, they've got all this extra money and they just said, all right, what can we... You know, that's why I think if we carry over funds, then we, in our, we're allowing that, then we can... I think that we, when we have good years, that we don't have a lot of extra breakage of stuff, that can help our next year's budget. Don't you agree? Okay. Are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, now we have a public hearing on ordinance to allow for employee bonuses.
And I'll be brief on this. You'll remember the Department of Social Services, State Department of Social Services asked for certification of ordinance... And after we got to looking, uh, realized that there's not ordinance on the books for Smith County, there's a proposed or, or draft ordinance, hopefully in the packet, um, and a advertisement. And it's a pretty simple ordinance and, and, and this is just required, as you remember, or you may remember, the state budget includes a one and a half percent bonus for state employees, which includes social services, comp board. Um, and we've bu, we've budgeted the same for all county employees, but we need to have the, uh, ordinance in place. Uh, I'd be glad to, to read the, um, read the advertisement, or you can just waive the reading of the rules should you want to.
Do we, do we, do we have a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Waive the read rules.
They're still in place. Just waive the read.
Second, we have, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor waiving the rules, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So we don't, we, um, didn't have anyone sign up to, to speak for the public hearing? But we do have a citizen. Who's still here.
Mr. Wasson, great to have you back tonight.
Good to be here.
All right, um, any, any further discussion?
Yeah, officially open it.
Okay, I'll officially open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak?
Okay.
All right, I'll now close the public hearing.
And if it's, uh, with time being of the essence for the board, um, I'd like to recommend that we waive, waive the rules of the hearing and take action this evening on the draft ordinance.
Do, do we need to approve waiving the rules again?
Wait, uh, waive the, uh, rules of public hearings.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have fir, a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, uh, waiving the rules for the public hearing? Signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Now, do we, I guess, looking for a motion to approve the.
Ordinance.
Ordinance.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Let me ask first, just from my simple mind, what is, I'm not grasping the purpose, I guess, of the.
Yeah, so, so state code, it, it, the Dillon rule, we've heard the Dillon rule, so state, uh, state code allows, and I'm going to be an attorney for a minute unless Scott wants to speak up. Allows cities and towns to do some things and, and restricts counties from doing some things. And employee bonuses is one of those things that's restricted unless we have an ordinance on the books. And we found that we don't, we do not have an ordinance on the books tied specifically to this, so. Uh, there were a half dozen that I found from around the state that I used as a template to, to create. So it wasn't very difficult, but it's literally just gives the board the authority to, uh, provide an employee bonus through the state budget should we choose to.
What would be the purpose of the bonus? Would that be like to take a place of a caller or something?
Yes, sir.
So you could give like a one-time bonus instead of a three percent raise?
Sure. Would be the option.
Is that the thinking behind it?
It is.
So we ain't had that rule, do we take, go back to all them employees and take back the bonus?
I haven't said anything to anybody. I'd rather not. I'm, I'm looking ahead.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, and we have, we've had a motion, we've had a second, so all those in favor, passing the ordinance, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Citizens time. Do we have any, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Dr. Wasson.
Yeah, I did sign up.
Okay, please state your name and address for the records.
Certainly will. Charles Wasson, Wassona. It's really hard to come to these meetings, you know? I mean, a nice, wonderful day to work. Have to stop work, shower, eat and everything else and, so I appreciate y'all's willingness to do that. But I do, I do realize it's kind of hard, hard to do. But you know, one big problem that I see, I mean, one, there's a lot of big problems is, you know, does everybody understand what you're talking about today when nobody comes to the meeting? Nobody comes to the public hearing and maybe, maybe there'll be a handful of the public hearing. And I used to spend a lot of time with Charlie just going over the, you know, year-end report from Davenport and, yeah, that's the craziest stuff. I mean, it's just really hard for an average person to understand and, uh, I don't understand it all either. And I used to meet with him every year back twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, fourteen, longer. But anyway, I guess what I would like to say is, uh, I agree with Mr. Widener, I agree with Mr. Paris, I agree with Roscoe and what y'all said about spending money and everything and, uh, I'm, uh, I guess I hate to spend money, I don't really have to. And I certainly don't like to spend money, just be able to spend money. In other words, interest on debt. I don't like to be in debt. That's just not a good feeling. And when you know the federal government, if you read the same literature that I do, the federal government has a, they're like thirty-seven trillion, is that the number y'all read? Almost about thirty-six trillion, you know, the thing's going to, it's going to collapse. One of these days. You know, is there any way that y'all can figure out who is paying the taxes? Did they get a four percent increase in the amount of money they made this year or five percent? Roscoe, did you make a lot more money this year? So it'd be nice to have that input if y'all are representing the citizens, right? Okay, well, that's a, so, you know, we could talk for years on all that stuff. But I would like to read one thing, the Virginia Constitution. This is the Virginia Constitution, Bill writes section fifteen, qualities necessary to preserve, preservation of free government. That no free government nor the blessings of liberty can be preserved to any people but by firm adherence to justice, moderation, temperance, frugality and virtue. By frequent recurrence to fundamental principles and by the recognition by all citizens that they have duties as well as rights. And I know citizens don't, they don't take that duty part seriously, but they do take their rights a little bit more seriously. Such rights cannot be enjoyed, saving a society where law is respected and due process is observed. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wasson.
Thank you, sir.
All right. No one else signed up? I guess I'll, now I'll close citizens' time. And move on. Old business items, committee reports and recommendation, uh, joint budget committee, Mr. Up, would you like to take that one?
Yeah, I'll take that. Um, so we did have a joint budget committee meeting with the town of Chilhawee and the town of Marion, um, to discuss our EMS agreement and operations. We reviewed the twenty-three EMS agreement and noted due, due to rising costs and, and limited data, the need for financial adjustments was emphasized throughout the meeting. We did have several recommendations such as consistent hiring practices, annual payband reviews and clearer, clearer cost responsibilities. Uh, and there was no final action, but, uh, the direction for, um, for me and the two town managers was to get together, um, and discuss some, um, payband, uh, reviews that we can all agree on and basically come back to the county budget committee with recommendation on how to, how to stabilize and equalize what we're doing for all EMS operations throughout the three, um, agencies. So no, no official action or recommendations from that committee meeting.
Okay. Anyone having questions about that? Anyone? And, uh, and, and being, being, uh, attentive to that meeting, I think, you know, we've got to have a consistent pay scale across the board there. And, uh, right now it's a little bit all over the place, so we, that's hopefully we're going to get reeled, reeled in and we could have this consistent in, in our whole, whole county and towns, so. All right, next item, animal control committee. Uh, Mr. Courtney Widener?
Uh, the animal control committee, I had met on May fifteenth and we reviewed the following animal damage claim. It was from, uh, Ms. Rebecca Dowinger, one thirty-three Lancaster Lane, Marion, Virginia, in reference to two sheep that were found deceased. After, uh, discussion, the following committee recommendation was made. Uh, North Fork District Supervisor Rick Guggins remotes recommended naming the Smith County damage claim the amount of five hundred fifty dollars. To Ms. Dowinger, due to lack of evidence, cause of death, I had seconded the motion and unanimously approved. If I could just elaborate on that a little bit. Typically, when, when we have these damage claims, we have, uh, animal control can, you know, usually say without doubt that, you know, this is something that, that a dog has done. Uh, we could not show that through the evidence provided. They, they couldn't say, uh, without doubt that, that a dog had done the damage to the livestock, so that was the reason that we had decided to that point. Want to move on from that?
Okay.
Well, I may, may note also the second, she was just missing. She was assuming that it was dead, but it was just missing, so there's no proof of the second one anyway.
I saw one of the picture there. Okay, all right, we have a committee recommendation. And, uh, on, from out, on the animal control committee, uh, any further discussion? All right, hear none? Do I have a motion to accept a committee recommendation?
The committee's recommendation, you could just vote yes, aye, or nay.
All right, so we don't have, all right, all those in favor signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Committee recommendation approved. All right, uh, budget committee and Mr. Up, would you like to read that one?
Yes, sir. Uh, budget committee held a second meeting on May fifteenth. We had two items on the, um, on the agenda. The first one was the United Way of Southwest Virginia supplemental, um, donation related to the hurricane, um, relief fund. They have a revised memorandum, memorandum of understanding that's included in your packet. The committee reviewed it and, um, ultimately made a motion by Mr. Widener to approve the addendum to the memorandum of understanding as presented and authorized county administrator to execute the document. Motion was seconded by Mr. Atkins and unanimously approved as a recommendation from committee.
Okay. We have a recommendation from a, a budget committee. Do we have any further discussion? All right, this is a recommendation, so all those in favor signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item we discussed was budget amendment number eleven in the amount of five hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars related to additional funds for the CSA program, the Smith County school operations and the United Way hurricane relief, um, donation. Uh, following discussion, Mr. Widener made a motion to approve budget amendment number eleven in the amount of five hundred fifty-three eight fifty-eight. Um, and Mr. Sergeal seconded the motion as a recommend, and ultimately, unanimously approved by, um, committee recommendation to the board.
All right, we have a committee recommendation. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, hear none? All those in fix, favor, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries, five up. Or recommendation carries. Uh, new business items, board appointment.
I'll take that if you don't mind, sir. I currently serve on the New River Mount Rogers workforce, uh, developing consortium board. And they meet quarterly with my work travel. There's times when I can't make those meetings in person. So instead of, and, and I know we've talked about having some redundancy or a backup, uh, member represented. So if, if, if it pleases the, the remainder of the board here, I would like to act, and if, and I've been spoken with Mr. Up about this, if, if everyone would agree, I would agree that we named, uh, Mr. Up here as a alternate to serve for me if, if I'm unable to attend these meetings.
I guess next.
I make, I make a motion, if that's okay.
Okay, do I have a second?
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? I think this is, I think this is a very good idea.
I hate to just leave our seat unavailable due to, due to my work and I can't, I can't tell my, my job. Sorry.
We always keep representation.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, all those in favor signify by the same aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, five up. Report from county attorney.
As always, a pleasure to be with you, but I don't have anything to report at this time.
We appreciate that, Mr. Farley. Thank you. All right. Report from county administrator and staff.
First item that's not on your list there, I do want to, uh, introduce everyone to Ms. Maddie Pitts, Pitts. Um, she is the new deputy clerk, will be beginning, uh, her job in June. And she's here just watching Becca and her magic, absorbing everything but Maddie. So she'll be your, your primary point of contact with, with, uh, starting June second, right?
Maddie, on, on behalf of this, uh, board, we welcome you to the team.
And we are crazy excited, let me tell you, just, just to have someone, um, not only just someone in the, in the, uh, in the seat, but someone with the energy and, and, um, desires that, that Maddie has and what we've heard from the library. She currently works for the, the library di- digital.
Navigation.
Navigator. Yeah, so, um, I, I'm excited to have her come and I appreciate you being here tonight. Yes.
Well, don't worry, I'm sure we're going to ask you a question and you're going to go, what? How can you not know this?
Next item I have, there's just the, um, you'll remember the opioid abatement authority gave some funds to the health department and we did, um, they purchased a few, uh, mobile health, um, clinics. Uh, the first one has been delivered and they're going to do a ribbon cutting for it on June eleventh at ten o'clock at Marion Senior High School. And if it's pretty, the sun's out, we'll do it outside. If not, we'll do it in the auditorium. Yes. Uh, so if you, if you'd like to be there, um, please let me know. I'll, I'll be happy to coordinate our SPPs or Maddie will be happy to once June second comes around. Um, and then, um, at your dais, you should have had a copy of the, uh, Evergreen Soil and Water Conservation Annual Work Plan. Just, uh, want to make sure you saw that. That's all I have. Unless you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Up and, uh, and Ms. Pitts, welcome to the team once again. All right, supervisor comment time. And, uh, I am going to, uh, instead of pulling cards, I'm going to do it the way we read, from left to right. Mr. Widener, I'll put you up first.
Just say when you read.
Well, that, I think Mr. Wasson Drayton, that would be his left hand. So, uh, just one. Couple things.
Thanks, sir.
No, you're welcome. Looking forward to the, uh, opening game of the Marion Haver Mothers this coming week. That'll be exciting for the community and, and, and hopefully this is going to be the start of something to help get people out and, uh, you know, just be able to enjoy their community a little more. So, uh, you know, the support there is needed and I think this is going to be a great thing and there's been a lot of hard work on the back end of this to, to make these things happen and, and actually in a very short amount of time. So, uh, I've kept up and seeing where they were signing people, uh, some of these athletes. And there's a lot of local athletes on these teams, so we need to make sure that we support them. Uh, Memorial Day coming up too. Just always remember, uh, the true meaning of that day is to remember those who have given the ultimate sacrifice uh, during their service to our country. Uh, we are very appreciative of them and their families for all they have, uh, done for us and the sacrifices they have made. And, uh, you know, if, if you're able, I know Marion has a parade, it, it would be nice to see a good turnout for that. And just, uh, help support a lot of our local veterans who, uh, who ultimately had gave that sacrifice for us, not only in this county, but for our country. Uh, I would like to say also the American Legion. again, they continue to impress me. Uh, Mr. Chaney is very involved with the community, he's very involved with, uh, with the Legion and, uh, he's constantly traveling, um, to conferences and doing everything he can to try to, try to help the Legion, but at, at the same time also help the community. So, any kind of support that we can give them, the VFW, uh, you know, and I, and I think this is a great time to be talking about it because, you know, we've got things coming up in, in the community that they're gonna be very involved in with, with the, uh, Memorial Day remembrance and, and also Independence Day and, and things coming up. So, we just need to make sure that we throw as much support behind them as we can and, uh, and, and we appreciate Mr. Chaney and, and the group that comes up very often, um, and attends these meetings. We, we just don't get to see that whole lot. And, and, and to see that, I think, uh, says a lot for them. Again, Dr. Carter, wanna wish him the best. You know, I, I try to think of who in the world else could fill those shoes, uh, as far as... I, I don't know that I've ever seen the, the man in a bad mood or, or he wasn't smiling. Well, well.
That's what you done.
Well, you just, I don't even think about that, but you know, I mean, honestly, honestly, he's been a, he's been a blessing for our, uh, community to, to take the reins and, and, and be in a position that not very many people would have. And, and I, I commend him for that and I wish him the best of luck and thank him for his service to our community. Also, uh, just wanted to hit to, um, something recent, Mr. John Clare with Allen Marion Chief Police. He's, uh, he's leaving to a, a, a different job and growing in his, uh, career and I, I wish him the best of luck. Uh, I, I'll be the first one to say that, and I've even told him that, you know, somebody from outside, you just always wonder how they're gonna do, you know, and, and, but I, I think he's done an exceptional job and, and I wish him the best of luck for, uh, for his future and, and whatever path that leads him. Hopefully, he, he has mentioned about coming back to Smith County. Hopefully he will, but, uh, again, just wanna thank you. Thank you for the staff, uh, and, and again, welcome to our, uh, newest employee and we look forward to working with you.
Okay. Jason?
You done?
Not yet.
Just to echo according to saying, you know, I guess what I'll say is start with the baseball thing. We talk about, well, school's out tomorrow, people's thinking about going on vacation, that kind of stuff, but we talked about this. There's lots of things going on in Smith County to support your local stuff. Baseball, we got farmers markets, we've got, uh, the, the splash pad in the water park opening up. We, we've got all this other stuff that is going on around our area, so it gives you stuff to do. You don't have to go away from here to find stuff. We, we've got things coming up all, all summer long for your kids. Um, I would also say, uh, even July, July sixth, you know, with the fireworks, we got things, we're trying to bring things back, bring that sense of community. I'll, I'll bring that right around and talk about Mr. Chaney at, uh, American Legion. I mean, I've, I've seen with him, he has been able to bring an energy back to that organization where, as we know, our veteran community is no, is not getting any younger. And he, and he has brought in a, uh, an energy to those people. I've even seen with my father, you know, eighty-seven years old, but he's, he's going to the meetings, he's active in their events, that kinda stuff. So he's brought that back. You know, not to harp on the budget, but we gotta do what we gotta do for the county. We gotta provide schools, we gotta provide trash, we gotta provide, uh, police, fire, EMS. I just wanna make sure that we do it physically responsible. Uh, the roundabout at, uh, McMullen out there?
It's great.
Obviously, people figured out how to go around in a circle without, you know.
Not today. That's the one, he just immediately stopped at it and he took a left turn.
Things happen, I mean, they're learning, they're learning. But, but I hope we get better. I hope, I hope they figure out number one before number two comes. And then, uh, last thing I'll say, I'll continue to harp from last meeting, VDOT gotta do better. Had a complaint, uh, from a citizen about some things and I'll be addressing that. They have addressed some things, but they have got, VDOT has got to do better. Just take pride in your organization. Taxpayer's money is what funds every bit of that. You've got to do better. And I still challenge it. Show up one day, I'll ride you around through my area and the rest of the county and we'll show you the stuff that you say you can't find.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. Uh, let's say a few brief things. Number one, uh, we got a lot of base, school baseball teams, softball teams that are still alive that are fit in, in the finals of our district tournaments, also track and tennis teams, uh, and, uh, that are, so if you get a chance, get out and see these kids play, they compete with really good teams and, uh, and the region play will start next week and if they get through the region, they'll be competing at the state level, so. Good luck to all our athletes and coaches and their spring sports as they get ready for those competitions. Also, uh, you can't reiterate it enough, the true meaning of Memorial Day, I mean, good old hometown of Marion, putting those crosses up every year. My grandfather has one out there. He was in the Navy in World War Two and, uh, I think it's just truly a nice touch to signify our appreciation for the people who, who paid, who sacrificed for our great country. Uh, also, uh, many well wishes and prayers for our school board, as they have to make a tough decision on finding a replacement for our school superintendent. Now, that will not be an easy decision. And, uh, Dr. Carter's done a phenomenal job and, uh, our losses, I guess, Emmer and Henry's game, so. I'd also like to say thank you for Becca for stepping in and filling in our need there during this time. Great, great job going there and, uh, and I'd like to say thanks to this board. We, we've also got some tough decisions to make here in the next couple, three weeks and, uh, and I think we'll make it with the best wisdom that we possibly can in judgment and being very frugal with our taxpayer's money to the ultimate that we possibly can be. And, uh, and, uh, and like I said, so I'll ask prayers for ourselves now, so. Alright, Mr. Billings?
I think most of what I would've said has already been said, but I would, uh, like to see a big crowd for the parade Monday. The veterans most definitely deserve it. What I understand, the VFW is gonna have free hot dogs afterward. I think that's a good thing that they're getting back into that. They need our support also, uh, them and American Legion, we do need to show them a little more love, I think, over, over the year if we can, so. And like Mike said, there's some rough decisions that's gonna be, have to be made. I just hope that whatever happens, the public will understand that we're doing it for the veterans of the county, so. Tough either way, so. Appreciate everything that Sean and his staff does. If I'm not mistaken, that's another redhead, so. So, I guess that's part of the application process. I'm sure she'll do well. She's got some big shoes to fill, though, yeah. But welcome aboard and we look forward to working with you.
Okay, Roscoe?
Welcome new staff, everything is, like he said, done been said, and I've said, we done recap the meeting. Everybody knows two times what's going on. I will give one bit of advice on them. The VDOT, the more you push them and the more you harass them, the damn slower they get. So you better remember that. It don't matter how many times you come up here and say, I need a road fixed, this has gotta be fixed, they're gonna do it at their time and not before. I worked for them before, I know how they work.
Oh, there's the connection.
Ruin me. See, ruin me.
You write that down.
God bless everybody, I love each and every one of you. Be careful going home.
Okay.
I do have one thing that I forgot to say, the Employee Picnic, Summer Picnic, June, Friday the thirteenth, eleven thirty to one, whatever. But, yeah, we chose Friday the thirteenth, so bring your best Jason Voorhees outfit that you can find.
What time is it?
Eleven thirty, twelve.
June?
June thirteenth, yes, sir.
Is that the park restaurant?
Right here, where the, where cookout.
Okay.
Thanks to Mr. Williams and Mr. Williams, and a whole bunch of volunteers.
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 Other duties may be assigned.
Thank you, Mr. Up. Okay, uh, before I close the meeting, is, if, if we left, everything good? Everybody, will left anything out?
The only thing would be just the recess for the planning commission meeting.
Alright, I'll now recess our, our Board Supervisors meeting until seven PM when we have a joint meeting with the Pla-